Good evening. I call the Board of Selectmen meeting to order. It is February 8th, and the first item on our agenda is recognizing Chief Cobb with regard to an award she wishes to present.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm here to present a certificate of exceptional duty to communications specialist Greg Barthol, and I'll tell you a little bit about it now. On Thursday, January 18, 2024, at approximately 6:40 PM, communications specialist Greg Barthol toned a first alarm fire in New London at Hanaford Grocery Store for a report of fire in the bakery oven filling the building with smoke. A first alarm assignment requires dispatching of multiple fire departments from different towns for mutual aid and support personnel. While still managing the first alarm fire at Hanaford, communications specialist Barthol toned a first alarm fire in the town of Sunapee for a report of smoke in the building due to a heater. Communications specialist Barthol, knowing he had multiple pieces of fire apparatus still tied up on the New London call, drew from his years of dispatching expertise and knowledge to modify the run card for the Sunapee call, pulling other fire apparatus units from the region to attend to that fire. Throughout the night and during his shift, his entire shift, he managed what turned out to be a five-plus alarm fire in Sunapee. Not only did communications specialist Barthol effectively dispatch and manage the fire apparatus and personnel responding to the scene, he requested utility companies, the American Red Cross, and diesel fuel trucks for the fire apparatus who were running low on fuel. This type of dispatching is evident of communications specialist Barthol's ability to think quickly on his feet and expertly manage multiple major overlapping events, all from his seat in the communications center. As you can hear and see, fires are extremely busy and extremely difficult things to manage, and like I mentioned, it really drew on Greg's years of experience and his knowledge, and so that's one of the reasons that he's receiving this certificate tonight. Joining us tonight in appreciation of his efforts are the Sunapee Fire Chief John Galloway, members of the Sunapee Fire Department Lieutenant Rysel, Safety Officer Goslin, New London Fire Chief Jay Lyon, New London firefighters Andrew Sarnavitz, and Connor Heath, New London Police Officer Daly, Sergeant Lamson, Lieutenant Keith and Admin Assistant Dunlap. I don't think I missed anyone. And of course, we have the man of the hour, communications specialist Barthol. So Greg, why don't you come on up? Congratulations. I'm just going to read the certificate real quick, and then we can have a photo op, hopefully. So a certificate of exceptional duty is presented to Greg Barthol for outstanding personal and team efforts on January 18, 2024, for skillfully dispatching and managing significant fire calls in two towns back-to-back. You successfully dispatched a first alarm fire in New London and within the hour dispatched a five-plus alarm fire in Sunapee that lasted your entire shift. Your expertise and knowledge in handling both of these incidents is evidence of your commitment to public safety and your profession. Congratulations.
Thank you.
exactly how much work goes into it.
Right, yeah. Yeah. Greg, seriously, thank you so much. You handled that amazingly, and two towns at least are very, very grateful you were there on duty, so thank you. Okay. Thank you, Chief. Are there any comments from the public about anything that is not on our agenda? Bob?
Hi, my name is Bob Bowers. I'm a resident of New London. I wanted to make you aware of the gratitude and thanks that many of us who walk the sidewalks have to Bob Harrington and the crew down at the Department of Public Works. They do an excellent job of cleaning the sidewalks. They get out early and often, sometimes to their frustration, having to go back out after the state has gone through and plowed up snow and slush off the sidewalks. They just did. I'm here in part because, in addition to having done that over the years, this year I've noticed that they are making the sidewalk swath much wider. That has made it much safer. It made it much easier to walk. I have found that when we meet on the sidewalks, those of us who walk, we no longer have to step out into the highway, and I appreciate the ability to walk. And I've also noticed they seem to be cleaning up a lot faster because of the change in weather when they're that wide. So I wanted you to know that his work, all their work, is really appreciated by those of us who use the sidewalk. So, thank you.
Thank you, Bob. That's great. Part of it has to do with the equipment we have, and one thing Bob did was order a sweeper that was wider, that could do a wider swath. Yeah, so that, yeah. So when you see the budget and those types of things, remember this. Colin? Okay. Is there any old business that we haven't discussed? Okay. Chief Cobb, you were going to talk about a grant for mobile data terminal?
I think I need a bigger podium. Okay. Okay, so I am before you tonight. Several months ago, I came to the board when I had applied for some highway safety grants for speed enforcement, DWI enforcement, other types of enforcement efforts that is statewide, and so New London was eligible to apply for some of those grants, and we did so, and we were granted $8,200 for those enforcement grants. And since I applied for those grants, we were then eligible to apply for subsequent grants for equipment, and so I then did that because we were eligible to do that. And so this money here tonight that I'm looking for you to consider is for new MDTs, or mobile data terminals, computers in the cruisers, basically, that will work seamlessly with the new software we'll be going live with on February 21st, and it's a way for officers to do some work in the cars and to manage things in the cars a little bit better. And so our current computers in the cruisers are several years old, and they're getting very tired, so we were definitely due for new computers in the cars. We have applied for grants in the past, and we haven't received any, so I was happy to hear that the Office of Highway Safety was opening up this grant. But again, in order to be eligible for this equipment, we had to apply for the enforcement grants, which I did several months ago. So tonight, I'm looking for you to consider the Grant Agreement Amendment Notice from the New Hampshire Office of Highway Safety. They are going to amend our original award from $8,200 to $29,421.48. There is an amount of match in there that we would come up with, and I believe I can absorb that in my operating budget by perhaps putting off some other projects that we might have considered in this fiscal year that that money was allocated to, that I might be able to do in a subsequent year. So the equipment grant will cover 75% of the cost for the laptops and the docking stations and things like that, so there is an amount of match that we have to come up with, but I believe I'll be able to absorb that in my operating budget.
Chief, you've got a number, received a number of grants over the last year. Would you care to tell us what the total amount is? It's roughly...
Sure, sure. We don't have all of the money in hand quite yet, but the Phase III of the communications project that's been going on for 10 years nearly, Phase I and II are complete, and Phase III will be completed hopefully this spring or summer. That's in the amount of $135,287. That's currently in the approval process, and that's to put equipment on Mount Sunapee so that we can have better radio coverage in the towns, New London included, but certainly Sunapee and Newbury are included in that as well, that would experience some better radio coverage. The Highway Safety Enforcement Grant, $8,200. The Highway Safety Equipment Grant, federal funds for the new records management program. So all told, it's over half a million dollars. It's about $577,000, I think, give or take. So we have a lot of projects open right now at the police department, and a lot of opportunities that certainly we're grateful to the Board of Selectmen for supporting, and, you know, it's, grants are an incredible amount of work, as you know, as anyone knows, it's applied for any, certainly the federal grants are a challenge in and of themselves, but it's a challenge that we're willing to take on because there is money out there if you're willing to do the work and know where to look, so.
Well, thank you. BB, do you have any questions for the chief about this? Bill?
Do we need to approve this?
Yes.
So I would move that we approve Chief Cobb's application for grant for mobile data terminals.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Do we need to do anything else? No? Okay.
Thank you.
Good, thank you.
I think I'll just need your signature on some things, Janet.
Okay.
With you for that. Thank you.
All right. Adam, you're going to talk to us about a municipal grant program?
So I think you guys are familiar with the Municipal Per Unit Grant for Affordable Housing that the governor enacted as part of his $100 million campaign towards promoting affordable housing, but I'll give a little bit of background in case anybody isn't. The program allows for up to $10,000 per unit of affordable housing that is permitted and constructed in a community under certain parameters and timelines. We were growing skeptical of our qualification for the project because the initial parameters require occupancy by this May. It seems that perhaps the state was a bit optimistic when laying out the requirements of the program, and there are simply not projects that were able to get done that quickly, so they have encouraged us to pursue the application, and in fact, New Hampshire Housing conditioned the approval for the financing for Twin Pines on the good faith effort by the town to submit the application. So that's certainly encouraging that these two have both said that though, obviously there's no way humanly possible that this could be occupied in three months, that we should move forward with the application. So I have been working with Andrew Winter and a grant writer, Jennifer Redman, who specializes in affordable housing finance, and has been working on the project to prepare the application. You'll see, I think you have the printout, it's not, it's just an online portal, so there's nothing to sign, there's just, I won't hit the submit button until I get approval from you guys. But essentially, the questions that it asks goes through and lays out the parameters of the project, the number of units, what is the affordability, you know, the AMI, and then there is a series of supporting documentation that goes along with it. So there's copies of all of the backup of the local permits that have been approved to date, the state permits, like the alteration of terrain permit, and then the different funding requirements. There's some documentation that is outstanding at this point because they have not actually transferred on the property yet, so the state knows that there will be more documentation coming, but they would like us to go forward and submit the application at this time. The LURA, I think it's called, of course, affordable housing comes with a whole nother world of acronyms, so I think it's land use. It's essentially an easement on a deed for affordable housing that maintains its affordability, but that can't happen until you actually transfer the property and do the deed work. So for us to actually submit that, that's outstanding. We have not submitted the zoning or approved the zoning permit yet, which is the last step because we don't issue the building permits for commercial and multifamily. The State Fire Marshal's Office does that. We have a zoning permit process that essentially reviews that they have obtained all of their local permits at this point, that they have water, sewer, site plan, and then we send that copy to the State Fire Marshal's Office so that when they get the building permit application, they know that this property owner is really in the good graces of the town, and they can move forward with that process. So those documents are outstanding at this point.
So the goal is to get a grant for $600,000, correct?
Correct. And so as far as that $600,000, there are not really any strings attached to it. I think if this is successfully approved, you'll be hearing from Twin Pines about ideas for ways to possibly, you know, use portions of it, but can't have those conversations until you have the money. So this is step one to submit it and then hopefully move forward.
Any idea of how many of those grants have been given out already from those?
I haven't been able to get, I know of a few. So City of Lebanon, for example, I don't know if anyone saw the Valley News article this week where they discussed how they're potentially going to be using theirs. They were successful in obtaining $400,000, and they are actually looking to build a community of small, single-family homes on city-owned land, giving first priority to city and school employees. 70% of the employees within the Lebanon School District in the City of Lebanon have replied to a survey that they cannot afford to live within the City of Lebanon, and so that's how they're choosing to use their money to, it was a housing grant, they're funneling it back into housing. The Dover, I can't remember what Dover did with the money, but they got some for those micro-units that have been sort of all over different publications you may have seen. But some have been successful. Yep. There's an issue in, what is the name of the town? Troy, maybe? Down near Keene, a very small town where a developer was issued the funding. Unfortunately, the town, after construction had started, realized that their sewer treatment plant does not have the capacity, and so it has thrown a wrench in to their project, and their money stands in the balance. So there are certainly successful projects. I just don't think as many of them made it to the finish line in the timeline that they necessarily expected. And anybody who's tried to find a contractor probably knows why.
Bill, do you have any questions?
While you're up here, Adam, do you want to, just for the public, talk about what the timeline now is for the project?
Sure. I mean, it's fluid. I would say that things are always evolving, but as of right now, they are looking for a mid-summer of '25 move-in, which means that they hope to break ground this construction season. I think the test wells should be dug sometime in the next month and a half, and then from there, you know, there's 72-hour pump tests and things for community water systems. That's a DES permitting process, so they need to shore all of that up. They are hoping that they can submit the zoning permit application to our office sometime end of May, early June, to hopefully move forward with the State Fire Marshal's process in the June-July timeframe, so that in best-case scenario, end of summer, they would hopefully be breaking ground. And about a year, I think, in the construction time.
Right, yeah. Okay. Anybody else? Nope. Anybody in the audience have a question? John?
Do you have any update on Continuum?
Do you want me to wait?
Why don't we stick to this right now? Okay, and then we can go to that.
I can do that after.
Do I have a motion to submit this application? So moved. Okay.
Second?
All those in favor? Aye. Okay, do you want to talk about, a little bit about Continuum?
Yep, sure. So Continuum is a little bit further along in the water exploration process. They have punched their test wells, and they hit a pretty significant amount of water, and they were obviously very relieved. They did not have to go down very far to hit that amount, and so they are in the, in between the test well drilling and the 72-hour pump test right now. So they are working with DES to get through that, obviously. So a 72-hour pump test, they have to make sure that they can maintain the water volumes over a 72-hour period to make sure they just didn't hit a pocket of, you know, high-charge water. They gave them the initial, you know, belief that they have a lot of water, and so they dial it down substantially so that they're not discharging, you know, an exorbitant amount of water over 72-hour periods, but that will happen hopefully in the next month or so. And then, you know, you have to go through the whole process after that of the, because they will be considered a public water supply, though the general public will not be able to hook up to it because of the number of residents within the development that they serve. It puts them in the public water supply realm, and so there's a whole nother level of approval that happens there. They have to write their maintenance and operation plans, and then once they're actually in existence, there's regular testing. They have to have a water operator, just like a water precinct or a town has to have for their system, that actually does all of the testing to make sure that it's not contaminated at any point.
So are they going to have to come back to the planning board for site plan? Are they changing any?
Yeah, I've learned my lesson not to say no on that because, you know, they've been back eight times now. But as of right now, they have an approved plan for 106 independent living apartments, 12 independent cottages, and then the assisted living and memory care occupancy of 60. So if they decide that they need to adjust something between now and when they get a shovel on the ground, they will need to come back to the planning board for that, but I don't know anything about any change of plans at this point.
Hang on, Karen, you want to come up and, so we get your question. This is being recorded.
Thank you, Karen Epstein. Hi, Adam. Wondering, between the 60 units at Twin Pines and I think it's like 170-ish total combined at Continuum, any idea of what that means in terms of numbers of people? Thank you.
So do you want to be clear that the 170 at Twin, or at, um, Continuum is not necessarily number of units because assisted living and memory care are not units, per se? They're not really apartments even, because assisted living and memory care don't have kitchens, so it's more akin to like a hospital beds, because in memory care, you just really have a bedroom. So it's technically 106 units of independent living apartment and 12 cottage with 60 occupancy in the assisted and memory care. Obviously, in the independent living, it's hard to know exactly. I mean, you could have a couple that's occupying, one, you could have a single person, you know, I'm not sure exactly what their average census is in their other developments as far as the number of tenants or owners who are single occupancy or double occupancy.
Just any kind of, in my understanding, speaking?
I mean, I, maybe one and a half people per unit. Yep.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you, Adam.
Thank you.
All right. Kim, you're going to talk to us about H. Bill, House Bill 1281, is that correct?
Right. This is a bill that we heard about through the town of Durham. This bill is relative to zoning restrictions on residential rental property. Right now, New London has a restriction of five unrelated people per unit, housing unit. This bill would restrict towns from doing anything below two people per bedroom. Now, currently, ours is not per bedroom. You could have a three-bedroom house, and we would say you can't have more than five unrelated people. Durham apparently has three, so obviously they're concerned because they could have, there could be an apartment with three bedrooms or four bedrooms, could mean six or eight people, which exceeds their number. So Durham sent the letter that they sent to the legislature about this, and they copied all college towns, which is why we heard about it. Again, since we have a zoning restriction of five, the selectmen, you might be interested in, excuse me, writing a letter in opposition to this bill. I think the chief, the fire chief, and maybe the fire association is going to send some letters, and perhaps the fire wards and fire chief here in New London. I think those would be powerful letters, but certainly a letter from the selectmen as well if you're in opposition of this. Bill?
Okay. BB, do you have any questions? Just any, any status on the bill, do you know? Is it in committee or?
Yeah, it's, I think actually they might have missed the committee date because Durham talks about how this, they weren't aware of it, and they asked to be accepted later. I mean, it'll, it'll be going through, I'm sure, some more things. I don't think, they sent their letter February 2nd, I think, late arriving letters, and even testimony if it comes back up. I did let Karen Ebel and Dan Wolfe know about it as well.
Okay. Bill?
So I think we should be opposed to any activity by the legislature to try to further interfere with our own zoning regulations. It's one of the things that we all pride ourselves about is being able to manage our own town, and this is a clear example of, I think, overreach by the legislature.
Yeah, I agree. Local controls, very important.
And there's a slew of other housing bills. I mean, there are a lot.
All right, so shall we ask Kim to send a letter in opposition to this bill? Okay. Do we need a motion?
Yeah, you could.
Okay.
So I move we send a letter to the, on House Bill 1281, opposing the action.
Okay, second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We have a request to use the town parking lot on May 11th for cleanup day. This is, this happens every year. The only question I have, you said it was after Colby Sawyer's?
Yeah, Colby Sawyer graduation is the fourth or fifth, whatever that Saturday is. I double-checked with Karen Bonewall this morning.
Why are they doing it after? We always thought it was a nice idea to clean up the town before graduation.
They've always had to do it after because the Colby Sawyer is always in the first weekend in May, and you didn't want him to do it on the weekend of graduation.
No, I don't think that's...
So it's, I think, what they think, it's kind of cold in April, maybe? I don't know. They've always done it in May. May is the month they do it.
Okay.
So my question, Kim, on this, and was also recently something in the approvals that we, that we do about the Center for the Arts in August. What contingencies are we putting on these approvals having to do with the water main project? So, for example, on May, by May 11th, as we'll talk about in a few minutes when we get to the water precinct, they could be doing, digging up the road, or in August, when the Center for the Arts has gotten approval to use the town green. Are we telling these organizations that they, we may have to change our minds?
I don't know why we would change our minds.
Or are they aware of the fact that they might not have easy access?
Yeah, I mean, Putnam is wondering about it for, I mean, people will be using the green, people will be walking about town, people will be going to restaurants still, certainly.
Oh, sure, but...
They're warned, I mean, there, there could be dirt blowing around.
It's a lot different to have a major art exhibit on the green or be planning to use that parking lot for storage of stuff during the day if, you know...
We got to close the parking lot?
No, but the, but the road in front of it.
Oh, oh, yeah.
I know, this, this one's, actually what this did was made me think about the Center for the Arts one.
Right.
The people that are using the green this summer for big projects, not just walking their dogs.
Yep.
We should make...
They're aware of it. Oh, yeah, yeah.
If they sign up for these things, that we may inconvenience.
But we want to, I haven't heard anything that we're going to close the green, or, I mean, there's going to be people around town, churches, all the rest of it, right?
But if you've got several hundred people coming to an art exhibit, and they think they're going to park along Main Street or something, then...
Do we know, that's a good question, though. Do we know if they are going to need that library parking lot as part of this project? The water department?
I haven't heard that.
Put equipment in there?
Yeah, I, we have not talked about closing that for their equipment.
Well, that's a good question, though.
Chief?
Jay Lyon, Fire Chief. Bill's question is certainly valid. I think that when you look at the phases, at least that portion of the time, maybe later on the summer, that might be a consideration as far as where they're staging their equipment. One of the considerations was behind the Bar Harbor Bank as well. So they do have some parking back there, so it may not necessarily be the municipal lot since the water main's on the opposite side of the road, but for this particular event, they would either be starting, I would be shocked if they actually broke ground April, May. My guess is it will be a little bit later, but if they do, it's going to be either squires or the...
Right, is, is the hospital still doing the parade?
Yep.
Yeah, so they're not concerned about going, yeah, I mean, I think that would be one I would have thought they would have considered not doing, but currently they're...
Well, not only the parade, but also all the equipment on the...
And from what they gather, too, it's only a couple of hundred feet that they're moving.
Yeah, yeah.
Usually, if they have a bad day, it's a 100-foot increment, so that's... And from what they gather, too, it's only a couple of hundred feet that they're moving.
Yeah.
Usually, if they have a bad day, it's a hundred-foot increment. So that's sort of what they're planning. But I think they'll be more than willing to work with the town in any events that are going on to make sure that there are no conflicts.
I brought this up not because of the May 11th particularly, but because of the August thing and thinking, are we, are we, are we telling organizations that there could be a problem? An inconvenience?
An inconvenience, yeah. There shouldn't be any problems. The town is going to be open, restaurants are open, everything's open. So I don't want to let people think that things are closed.
Yeah, and I think the sooner that the water department, when they know for a fact that this is going to be taking place, a great avenue would be municipal matters to really push it out there, whether it be through the shop or other advertising, messenger, of course. Yeah.
Thanks, Jay. Okay, well, do I have a motion to approve the date of May 11th?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Our next item is to review the town warrant and either accept it. Are there any questions about the order of the articles? BB? Nope. No. Okay. Draft looks good. Okay.
Okay.
Do I have a motion to approve the town warrant? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Town Administrator's Report. Kim?
I was in Concord yesterday, yes, yesterday, to testify on the bill for NHMA, the lobbying bill.
Oh, yeah.
There were quite a few people there. I did see Dan Wolfe. He came in to check in, to sign in. So that was interesting. Those legislatures, they have their hands full down there. Glad I don't do that for a living. I also, I sent, we sent a letter in, again in support of the lowering, giving municipalities the ability to lower speed limits, seasonal speed limits, which we, last year, we actually, I did testify on that one. So that's one of Karen Ebel's bills. That would help specifically Bunker Road, who have asked you to lower speed limits there. Karen said that this year, there may be some movement where it may potentially get passed. It's been several years of trying. So we'll find out about that. Finally, we did hire somebody new in the selectmen's office, so that position will, should be starting on the 26th. So I'll be introducing her around. Well, you'll see a municipal matters article, I'm sure, to let everybody know. So that's good. And we have our new recording secretary, Kara's here, and so I'm very happy to have her. Welcome aboard. That's all I have.
BB, do you have any reports? No?
So I do, briefly. On Monday, the water precinct had their monthly meeting, and they actually turned it into their required budget hearing and their required bond hearing. And for those of you that follow that, both of those hearings were recessed until this following Monday at, at 4:00. But with regard to the, both the budget and the bond, they expect on this coming Monday to have, they've received all of their five bids on the Water Main construction project, and they expect by Monday to have selected one and to be able to then have a specific number for the, particularly for the bond, bond hearing. Then voted at the meeting to have the eminent Esquire Bob Bowers become the new moderator of the water precinct, at least on a temporary basis. Allegedly, he's going to run for the office next month. So thank you, Bob, for stepping up to that. They discussed the fact that they're down to two sites for looking for water, not for, to increase capacity, but for supplemental water for their existing uses. It was a very brief conversation. They've been talking to their engineers. They're again, using large numbers to consider what the cost of that would be, and said at some point, they'd want to come talk to the town about that. And I think, Janet, you came, and you heard a little bit more about some of the details of the Water Main project. I don't know if we want to wait until next time when they've actually figured out what they're going to do.
Right, yeah, I think, yeah. Let's wait.
That's it.
Okay. I asked Jamie Hess, who is on the Energy Committee, to go with me to the Sunapee Wastewater Treatment Plant and talk to David Bailey about a solar array at the treatment plant because their electric bills are so high, and they are interested in perhaps having a solar array over there. And Jamie has done a good job with the town. He is donating his time to do this and to see if it's possible. They have two companies that they've gotten estimates from, and they're going to get a third one. This third one is the same group that has done our solar array. So it'll be interesting to see what happens with that. But I think we could see a significant reduction in the electric bill for the towns of Sunapee and New London if this were to happen. So keep your fingers crossed. Okay. I don't have the minutes of January 17th, 25th, and February 3rd. Do you guys, have you all seen them? I haven't seen them.
I do. I have them.
I don't know why I do.
Do you want to look at some?
I think maybe I read them, but I'm not sure. I don't know where they are.
Because, at least I now, don't get them printed. I just, there's this link on the agenda, and I'm really good. Kim reminds me, I hit the link, and that's where I read them.
Well, I went online, and they weren't posted.
They're in a new folder for 2024. Well, the link took me to the folder.
Yeah.
With the, with just the 2024 minutes.
Okay.
We can get you paper copies, Janet. Well, we can do this next time.
I did look online.
I will, I will, I bet BB will agree with me. They're very straightforward.
Okay.
They are.
As were the ones.
Well, I may have read them, but I don't remember. So do I have motions to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All abstained. All right. Let's see, the next selectmen's meeting is Thursday, February 22nd. The offices will be closed on Monday.
19th.
The 19th. And I think that's about it. We just have to approve some vouchers. Anybody have anything they'd like to talk about? If not, then we'll sign some stuff and. Thank you all.